Today is Thursday, May twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four, and the time is six P M. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Welcome members of the community here tonight to observe the important work being done on behalf of all school district stakeholders. Dr. Homan, we have some items in the table file. Will you update it?
Yes, we have several items in the table file this evening. We have an amended first page for the sample certification of minutes relating to a special, the special election. That was included in that ballot language document. There had been some placeholder data. We have an updated first page with the actual language that's included in the rest of the packet. We also have a number of personnel items, including appointments, increase, decrease, change in assignment. We also have a leave of absence and some resignations. That is the table file.
Thank you so much. If there are no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Look by Cory, second by Jeff, thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion passes. We now move on to the public comment portion of our meeting, and we do have one person signed up. I will call you shortly. I have a script that I'll read and then call you up. This is an opportunity for residents, business, and/or property owners, parents, guardians, caregivers, students, and employees of the Northfield School District to address the board. All comments to the board must adhere to the guidelines set in place by District Policy two oh six regarding public comment. This is not a time to debate an issue, but only for the board to hear your comments. You're prohibited from taking comments, from making comments about specific students, staff, and administrators. The board respects and values input, but when it relates to a specific individual or a specific matter, this input must be heard by the appropriate personnel, including the building principal or superintendent, and not during an open meeting of the school board. You will be gavelled out of order if your comments are not in compliance with these guidelines. Please address the board from the podium. After being recognized by the board chair, identify yourself, and if you represent a group. We require that you limit your remarks to three minutes. You are not allowed to yield your time to another person. It is expected that members of the public will address their remarks with civility and respect. Personnel attacks by anyone addressing the board are unacceptable. The board has allotted up to a third, up to a total of thirty minutes for public comment at a regular school board meeting. I will not begin to call those who have signed up to speak in the order in which they signed in. Vice Chair Cory Butler will be monitoring the speaker's time. He will signal each speaker with the time they have remaining at one minute, thirty second, and ten second intervals. These limit, please make your comments as brief as possible, but no more than three minutes. And I have Patrick Tomcik signed up to speak. Welcome, Patrick.
Am I ready? I am Patrick Tomcik. I live in Northfield up in the north end. And it's come to my attention here in the last while that the school board and the city is trying to put together some kind of program to do the Northfield Ice Hockey Palace and reinstate it. It was turned down. It's been turned down twice very dramatically by the citizens of Northfield, and now it's coming back up again. So I did some homework, and I went and talked to Mr. Brad Tolberg, who is the, runs the Brooklyn Park, Minnesota Ice Arena. It's a twin sheet arena up there. And they keep one sheet open pretty much year round, but the other sheet, they close it when they don't need it, and either or the other sheet is closed on quite often, too. They get rent from Totino Grace High School. They get about a hundred twenty-five thousand to a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year from Totino, depending upon the strength of their schedule. They also rent to the Y schools, why is that a school district? Why is that a school has two sheets of their own, but they have a really big program, so they rent extra time from them. They also have the city regional ice skating group. There's about nine hundred twenty-five dues paying people who use it for ice skating, figure skating, that kind of stuff. And they also went out to schools, clubs, businesses, individuals who want to rent it off for two hundred fifty-five dollars an hour. He told me I could tell you guys that you can have your next meeting up there if you want, if you want to pay the two hundred fifty-five dollars an hour to rent it. I said I didn't know if they would do it. But with all of that, that they're doing, Brooklyn Center, Brooklyn Park loses a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on average every year operating that twin sheet program, twin sheet thing, a hundred fifty thousand. And if there's any major repairs to the infrastructure, that's over and above the hundred fifty thousand dollars. Brooklyn Center, Brooklyn Park, Maple Grove, Fridley, and some of the other adjoining towns there. Within twenty miles of their ice arena, there's about two hundred fifty thousand people. Roughly two hundred, a little bit more than that, and they still lose a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. Northfield has a population of fifteen thousand. We can't really include the students at St. Olaf and Carlton because they're not, well, they're here, but they don't pay, and state losses, they don't have to worry about city taxes or anything. Ice Hockey Palace has been overwhelmingly turned down twice. And I don't know why it's now being brought up again. It's a forty-two million dollar adventure that's going to cost the average homeowner in Northfield somewhere around a thousand dollars a year for twenty years to pay for it, and that's not the additional expenses of losing money and maintenance and so on down the line. I would surely can, hope you would consider doing something else, maybe merge with Faribault and so on down the line. There's different things that could be done without trying to tax the new, the, there's only so much we can do. We need a new high school. Concentrate on that. I will help you on that, but I don't think we need a forty-two million dollar ice hockey palace. Thank you very much for your time. If you have any, call me up. I can give you more information. Thank you.
Okay, we're on item four, announcements and recognitions. Director of Building, Buildings and Grounds Justin Robbely, Administrative Assistant Dorothy Cohen, and Officer Gabriel Comrie Crombie completed the Minnesota School Emergency Management Program through the Minnesota Homeland Security and Emergency Management School Safety Center, and tonight we have Connie Forster, Safe School Assessment Coordinator with Homeland Security and Emergency Management, who will present them with their certificates of completion. It's Connie here. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. So we are part of the Minnesota School Safety Center. I have two of my coworkers with me, Casey Cable and Randy Johnson, to present the certificates. Just a little bit about the certificate program. This program, there are thirty-four people in the state that have completed the program, and Northfield now holds three of those certificates. So we would like to recognize Dorothy, Justin, and Gabe for completing the program.
Participants in this program spend about six months of time completing some FEMA courses for us online. They do some independent study, and then they spend two days of pretty intense training with us. We take this class across the state, and so Northfield folks came up and spent some time with us this fall in the metro completing some in-person coursework and some project-style stuff. We talk about crisis communication. We talk about behavioral threat assessment teams. We talk about facility assessments. We really try to cover some all-hazard preparedness training for folks that are doing this type of work in Minnesota public K-12 schools.
Come on up, gang.
Reap your rewards. We are so proud of the people that are, we are honoring today. Minnesota School Safety Center is a part of the Minnesota Department of Public Safety, and we all work within that, within that division in all hazards, emergency response planning, and it's extremely important to have K-12 schools involved in that throughout the state, along with their public safety partners, and the Northfield team has just done a tremendous job, and we are very honored to have spent time with them.
Award winners.
Justin, congratulations.
Thank you.
Put your letter in there.
Thanks, David. Thank you. Wonderful job.
And we're happy to answer any questions about the course if the board has any at this time.
Thank you. Yes, board members, do you have any questions? At this time.
I, I just want to say thanks to the school, the, the program, because it is so important for us to be proactively prepared, so we appreciate Homeland Security offering this to K-12 schools. We all hope that we never have to use the training that was learned, but we are ready if need be. And I want to thank Dorothy and Justin and Officer Crombie for taking the time. This is not just about things they're doing during their workday. Obviously, there's things that you have to do outside in preparation for this, and I think it shows a commitment to us being prepared to make sure that we're serving our community. So we hope that it's training we never have to use, but our, we would always be prefer, prefer to be prepared rather than reactive, so we thank everyone for their service. And three of thirty-five, not too bad.
Thank you.
And Val's going to get the picture in the hallway there.
Okay, do we have any other announcements or recognitions?
Yes, I have two others this evening. Just really want to comment on yesterday's really wonderful Northfield Memorial Day service. Normally, that's held at Veterans Park, right off of Highway Three, but with the rain, it was held at St. Olaf College. And the Memorial Day service featured two Northfield High School graduates as part of the ceremony. District Grounds Coordinator Tracy Clausen, also a Northfield High School alum, is the current VFW post number four-three-nine-three commander. And Tracy delivered the commander's address. And Jody Green, another Northfield High School alum, who's also the former undersecretary of the Navy and a United States Air Force veteran, was the keynote speaker. She had an amazing speech about service and the kind of sacrifice, especially that Gold Star families make for the United States, and it was just really a wonderful event. And we just appreciate the VFW. There were a lot of local scout groups who helped organize and set it all up. You're having to set up two sites, right? Because you had it, you know, ready to go at Memorial Park for Veterans Park, and then also at St. Olaf, so we just want to thank everyone involved in that, showing an honor to those who President Lincoln said gave the ultimate sacrifice. So we also want to comment on the parade of graduates. And this was held today. The elementary school parade of graduates took place at elementary schools today. Seniors had an opportunity to celebrate graduation with our elementary students and staff. Shuttle buses donated by Benjamin Bus left the high school this morning and drove seniors wearing their caps and gowns to the elementary schools that they attended. And so students participated in hallway parades and took photos. There were parents there just reminiscing about their students' K-12 journey, and we just really appreciate the elementary schools, and Mr. Byer, who, this was really his idea. It's the second year of doing this. And it's the, again, continuing to celebrate the class of two thousand and twenty-four. So those are announcements here today.
That's lovely. Thank you for sharing that. Board members, do you have any announcements, recognitions you'd like to speak up? Okay, then we will move on to items for discussion and reports. First up, we have the sale of some district property. The district has received an offer from Lance Mantey to purchase district-owned property parcel seventeen dot eleven dot three dot seven five dot oh two one in Dundas. The property appraisal report and the purchase agreements are in the packet that is published to our website. The board will be asked for approval of the sale of this property at the June tenth meeting. Dr. Homan, do you have any additional comments?
I just want to reiterate what was said, that we did receive an offer on this very small parcel of land that is adjacent to the district shop. For people who are watching or listening, this is really Gleason Road. As you come through on Gleason Road, Ruth's on Stafford is on the right-hand side there. The district shop is back on the left. Lance Mantey is looking to purchase some property from us and some property from another landowner to be able to gain access to property that he owns behind those two properties. It is less than fifteen thousand square feet of land. It really is about kind of getting some right-of-way access, if you will. And so it was appraised. We checked with some other local realtor, another local realtor to validate was the appraisal and the, the offered price appropriate. That was deemed to be the case, because the lot is not buildable. Anything less than fifteen thousand square feet is not considered to be a buildable lot. So we are recommending the sale of that property, the offer price of eighteen thousand dollars, and then all of the other associated fees that would go on that. The school district would pay nothing in that. And we often hear about the tax base in Northfield, and I always think the best thing that the school district can do for the tax base is to be an excellent public school system where people want to be. That always maintains property values. And then there are times like this where we have a chance where we are able to help a local business. This is a business that wants to grow and be on this property, and so this is our small way of being able to help expand the tax base. So all of the data, the appraisal, and the offer are in the packet, and board members will be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Excellent. Okay, any questions or comments? Not at this time. Very good. Thanks for the information. Item B is the Fall Two Thousand and Twenty Four Bond Referendum and Ballot Language. Dr. Homan, you'll update the board on the referendum informational campaign, highlight upcoming events, and review the November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four ballot language. The board will be asked to approve the ballot language at the June tenth board meeting, and as was mentioned earlier, there is an update in the table file.
Yeah, so the first thing I want to share is just in the last couple of weeks, just give the board an update at the events that we have done in terms of making sure that we're educating the public about the November fifth referendum. So since the last time that we met on May thirteenth, we've held a couple of tours of Northfield High School, one on the fourteenth and one on the eighteenth. The interesting part about the fourteenth is the person who was actually the lead for the HVAC system renovation twenty years ago was on the tour, and it was really interesting to hear him talk about that and the things that they did as they were adjusting at that time. We had our biggest tour in quite a while. On the eighteenth, we had approximately twenty-five people on that tour. That was great to have all those folks there, so people are certainly interested. Since the last time we met, we've also presented at the Intergovernmental Township Board Meeting. That was at the Northfield Town Hall involving several townships, Rice County, Dakota County Representatives, City of Dundas, City of Northfield. We're all there. Really a high-impact event. We also did some tabling at a Third Thursday event in downtown Northfield, and a lot of curious folks, and so really good engagement there. Our virtual sessions, I wish I could say that they were well-attended. They have not been. There's been only one person who has shown up to any of the four. Again, something new that we tried. We may just put those on hold for the summer and then bring them back in the fall as we get closer to the election for people to get some of their final questions answered. We also did our first of three presentations at Fifty North on May twentieth, and then we also did a presentation for the Arcadia School Board on May twenty-first. So those are the events that we've been at in the last couple of weeks, again, just giving people information so that folks feel informed when they go to the ballot box in the fall. Then in this evening's packet, you have a packet of information, which I want to point out that there was the amended first sheet in the table file. There were, again, there was some placeholder language in the original packet that was sent out. That first page is the certification of the minutes. Should the, when the board, should the board move ahead with this at the next meeting? This is the document that certifies the minutes and begins the process with the county auditors. So this is a, we worked with Dorsey and Whitney, and I'll ask Val if she has any comments as we go through. We also have Jeff Sealy from Ellers here. Jeff is, works very closely as part of this process with the bond attorney as well to make sure that we're following the statute for the appropriate resolution, making sure that we're using the appropriate language. So lawyers take this. They take what you passed in March. They put it into ballot form. They create the questions in such a way that they understand are the best way to present them on a ballot, to make sure that we're describing what we are asking them to do. So the first couple of pages, you see it's the resolution that's calling the election. It goes through the components that the board did, all of the work that you did before making this decision. It talks about that we would issue general obligation bonds as a result of each question. It gets the question correct. It then shows you what the actual ballot language would look like and what the sample ballot would look like. There's a number of other parts of this that are really the next steps in the election process that the clerk works with through professional staff, works with the county auditors, our three county auditors, to get these items ready and to be part of the ballot in November. Something that I always want to clarify when we're talking about this is it can be a little bit confusing to people if they read, because they see, wait a minute, there's a, you're calling it a special election, but isn't it on the general election? Yep, it's a special election held in conjunction with the general election. This kind of ask of the community is not regularly occurring, so it is called the special election, but it is being held in conjunction with the general election. So if someone reads this, they might say, oh, wait a minute, I thought it was part of the general election. Yep, it is part of the general election, but the specific term is special election because it is not something that is regular. So all of these items are what we were directed to prepare. We'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, I've got Jeff here tonight to help us with any, Jeff does a lot of these. He can help us with what the protocols are. Val is involved with it as well. Any of us would be pleased to answer any questions.
Excellent. All right, board members, do you have any questions or comments for Jeff or Dr. Hillman or Val? Hey, Jenny?
Thanks, Claudia. I have a question regarding the question one, approval of school building bonds. Are we discussing only the, the minutes and the procedure? Are we also discussing the language?
You, we can discuss anything that was in that packet.
Okay, so question one, I'm just comparing it to the project financing section of the review and comment submental. Comparing it to that question one, where there's much greater detail in there submitted to the state where it's stating the square, approximate square footage, multi-story classroom, and the demolition section as well. And then in question one, here, we, we don't have any of that information, and I was just wondering why it was removed.
So I'm going to ask Jeff if you'd be coming to the podium to help us understand how the review and comment is something that's very specific to the state, right, in terms of the Department of Education. Then there is the translation of that into ballot language, and so Jeff does a lot of this. I'm going to ask Jeff to help explain the differentiation there.
Yep, so with the ballot language, it's more of a summary format, where the review and comment is going to have a lot of detail to provide to the Minnesota Department of Education. So what we do is we take the project and we summarize it, and in general, there's usually a very general, broad statement. You can see in the beginning, it says that it's for the betterment of school sites and facilities, so that's the broad language, and then some of the main components are identified to give voters an idea what the project is, and you will have an informational campaign which will have probably more detail. So in their mind, they're going to relate this to what they've been told as far as the detail. But we don't want to make it so long that it's cumbersome for people to cast the ballot.
Okay, I'm just confused because this is, this is a question that the voters will come across, and if they haven't gone through any of the campaign presentations, they're not going to know, you know, the details, and it just, it seems like it's, it's supposed to be a summary, but it's actually, it's, there's actually more language here than there is in that question one in the review and comment. So it's, it's actually more words, but less information, if that makes sense, so you know, they're not just saying replacing a portion. To me, that's, we have no idea, you know, what we're spending ninety-five million dollars on when it just says replacing a portion versus that original question one where it states the multi-story classroom and then demolition of the aged portions of the building, and then there's a little bit more detail in that one.
And Jeff, would you just talk about how the attorneys take that review and comment piece that's very specific to the requirements of the M D E? And, and what, why do they translate it in that way?
Okay, so, so the main reason that they create more of a summary statement on the ballot, less detail, is so you have flexibility to deal with anything that you get into, especially with something like this, where, where you're doing a renovation, you might be tearing into a wall and finding something that was totally unexpected. And if you create a ballot language that was extremely detailed, that might match the details submitted to M D E, the ballot language controls your authority. So if it lists in detail and they run into something in the middle of a construction or remodeling that you have to deal with as part of the project, someone could actually argue that, well, that wasn't part of the project because your ballot question was so detailed that it laid it out. So the idea behind it is to create a language that is specific enough that people understand what the project is, but allows for flexibility when you start digging into those walls and finding things that was unexpected.
I guess I, I wouldn't be looking for anything extremely detailed, but definitely, you know, just the words multi-story classroom in that first draft, to me, isn't extremely detailed, but it's definitely, you know, saying you're, you're going to get a multi-story, you know, classroom building from the ninety-five million dollars instead of just replacing a portion. To me, it's just very weak. And I, I, I just don't understand that that would be a good thing. To me, like I said, it's, I understand this, that we need to have a summary, and we can't go too deep in the details, but this is not that. This just seems to be removing a couple of the, the highlights is really all that, that I think that there should be.
Okay, thank you, Jenny. Any other questions or comments?
Then what is the process then as far as, I mean, we're reviewing this tonight, and then, I mean, is it, whatever the language is, is presented to us on the, is it the tenth, and then we're voting on it? Is there any more discussion or debate?
Yeah, so this is, the plan is, Jeff, to do this just like we do with all of the other items that are for action. Most of the other items that are for action, where we bring it to you at one meeting, present it, take feedback, like what we heard tonight. Any adjustments that need to be made between now and the time that we ask folks to vote, and we would ask people to vote on June tenth.
You have another question?
No, I just think a lot of that. I mean, I'm real estate in long, long, many years, and, and I mean, part of the things you took, I mean, there's so much ambiguity and stuff when you put in these phrases and you get the Lee Lees in here. And my concern is really for the taxpayer, where these questions, and question one should be just really succinct, and, you know, have the word demolition in there, because that's exactly what you're doing, because you're going to tear down almost two football fields, and people need to know that. Then what are you replacing it with? So you know, I just, I'm just a little bit leery of the real soft language, and I understand why you're doing that, but I think the taxpayer deserves as much detail as possible.
Okay. Jeff, did you want to speak to that, or?
Well, obviously, you can, you can draft a language to meet your needs. I mean, that's something we could bring back if, if the board wishes to do that. The, you know, when, when you're looking at demolitions and so forth, when you say replacing a portion of the high school, that kind of goes with demolishing and putting a new section in.
I prefer the word demolition in there.
I understand. Yep, so, again, whatever the board's wishes are, you can bring back.
Okay, Ben?
I'd just say I'm fine with the way the language is.
Okay, very good. Cory?
I go with Ben's. I'm okay with language as is.
Okay, I, I understand that we have two board members out. This won't come back until June tenth. We can continue to have discussion then. I don't feel like we need any additional changes to it. I feel like new building and renovations speak to the the things that you were highlighting, Jenny and Jeff, but that's where we are tonight. Thank you, Jeff, for showing up and helping us sort through that.
Thank you. Good day, thank you.
Okay, item C for tonight is the Status of Childcare in Northfield. Director of Community Education, Erin Bailey, will report on the status, availability, and challenges of childcare in Northfield. Welcome, Erin.
Thanks for having me. Just have to see if I have to make the magic happen, or Tim. Thanks for having me. I am happy to be here tonight to present on Early Ventures, our childcare center that opened in two thousand and six in this building. For reference, you are all sitting in the former B room, which is the young toddler room. The audience is all sitting in the former infant room, which is the Caterpillar Room. When it opened, we were licensed for forty-two children. We started with two children and also supported teen parents that were attending the area learning center upstairs. As you'll hear more, we are currently licensed for eighty-eight children and have five classrooms. As always, just wanted to start with the district's strategic plan and the mission and vision. This is, of course, what guides the work for everything, starting all the way down to our pre-K building. Early Ventures is obviously also tied to all of our strategic commitments that you see here and closely aligns with the first and second benchmarks that are part of the district benchmarks and also tied to the Northfield Promise. With Early Ventures being at the Northfield Community Education Center, Early Ventures families and students are also connected to hand-in-hand preschool, the, our early childhood family education programming, ECFE, Early Childhood Navigators and Growing Up Healthy, the Food Shelf, and by way of the Food Shelf, the Community Action Center, Adult Basic Education Programming for the parents of students. And then there is also support for completing scholarship applications and other applications, both within our Early Childhood Navigators and within our own district staff as well. So today, I want to give you a little bit of background about Early Ventures, help you understand what the childcare center is, where we see some of the needs in the district and within the community, and I'll certainly answer any questions that you have at the end as well. Early Ventures, as most of you know, is a DART Early Ventures, as most of you know, is a DART, a Department of Human Services licensed childcare center. In Minnesota, a childcare provider is required by state law to obtain a license to operate. The rule three is what governs childcare centers. It's a little green book. It's. A couple hundred pages long and that has all the statutes and the rules for running childcare centers. So just some examples of what's outlined for childcare centers in rule three. Things like ratios for classrooms. So for how many children we can have to how many staffs. So our infant ratio is four to one. Four children to one adult. Our toddler ratio is seven to one and our preschool ratio is 10 to one. Now that doesn't necessarily account for the needs of the children in those settings, but that is what the, those are the minimum amount of ratios that we can have. Rule three also governs how we operate early ventures among other programs. For example. We are not allowed to mix students from early ventures with other programs. So for example. Hand-in-hand preschool and early ventures cannot be on the playground at the same time. They also cannot be in the gym at the same time. Those programs, the Department of Human Services outlines that. People in the care of a licensed childcare center need to be. In their own space with their own group and not sharing those spaces. Other things that rule through outlines is that children have to be within sight and sound of adults at all times. So for, of the adult staff. So for example. If you, you can't walk out of a classroom and we had, that would potentially take staff out of ratio. You can't just walk out of a classroom. Even if there is another adult in that classroom, if it puts you below ratio, you have to stay within ratio. And that, but is deemed within sight and sound at all times. Allergies are another thing outlined. Allergies are, involve a significant amount of paperwork, even if it's a seasonal allergy. Or an allergy to something that we may never administer in a childcare setting, whether that be a certain medication. Once we are aware of that, we do have to produce a significant amount of paperwork on file. We have to have that paperwork accessible for when licensers come for an annual visit for their review. And again, it may never actually impact children while they are in the childcare setting. And one of the other things just to highlight is just our staffing requirements. So all early venture staff need to undergo a higher level background check through the Department of Human Services that is actually required by our school day staff. This background check also involves fingerprinting. And so this does make it so you can, as Matt, he and I have had the opportunity to do the fingerprint and background check. So it is a high level background check that takes place. This can make staffing a challenge because we can't just pull anyone to sub in early ventures. Everyone who subs in early ventures has to have gone through this, the Department of Human Services background check process. So because of this, we employ two floats in the program too, because we have to be able to. Cover our own staffing in that program because it doesn't allow for us to say, pull another. Teacher or EA from the building to work in that program. We are really as the, the staff that is part of early ventures has to be a self-contained staff. There are also educational training requirements for a part of our staffing. So early ventures are required to complete 24 hours a clock credits every year. And then in addition, when we hire staff, whether that be teachers or assistant teachers. They need to meet certain criteria to be in those roles. So whether you're a teacher, you're hired as a teacher or an assistant teacher. You do need to have either a certain number of education credits or certain experience hours. And there's different, there's a whole chart in the rule three book. There's different ways you can make that up, but that is how you become a. What is called teacher status or assistant teacher status in a childcare setting. Classrooms cannot operate with just aides. Aides can supervise during rest time and during bathrooming, but we can't. Leave children alone with just aides in a childcare setting. So just the structure of early ventures, we have five classrooms at early ventures and you can see those on the screen. The, when you see where it says approximate ages, to move from the infant classroom to the young toddler classroom, you do have to be walking. And so that's where you will see an approximate age. We often are moving children in there somewhere between 16 and 19 months, depending on, on when you are. When you're walking and that's a developmental milestone. That's a little bit different for every child. The also kind of approximate, we have to hold spots throughout the year. For babies that have been born that will be coming into classrooms and then for the, those babies that when they're in the infant room to transfer to the toddler room or the B room. And so there's some approximate because we will do that based on what our registration looks like and where we're moving. Students into the next classroom, but there will be times where, where if we are licensed for 14 kids, we might not have 14 kids because we are. Have a baby that's on their way in, or we have a toddler then that's moving up to accommodate a, a baby that is, has been born and is about to start childcare. Once they get into the ladybug, firefly and butterfly room, they are moving as a class at that point and staying together. So here is just our, a history of our enrollment and waitlist numbers. As you can see in the narrative, the majority of our waitlist is for infants and young toddlers. The majority of the waitlist is in the caterpillar and in the B room. Followed by our older toddlers in the ladybug room. So that is where we do see most of the waitlist. Part of that is due that as children turn three or four, there are more opportunities in the community. So you start to, three-year-olds can start to attend preschool. So we have more options that become available. Or we have childcare sites that take more slots or start to take slots. Once you've kind of moved into the toddler age. So those are again, that helps accommodate those children. We, and part of why we see what less waitlist. I will also say rarely do families who start out, once they're attending early ventures, we rarely see anyone leave early ventures. Which is likely true of any other childcare setting too. You are building relationships with those staff and the other families. And so. It just then lends that it's less likely you're going to see people moving into spots as they get older. We often, we do see people obviously that move to the community than that do want in those slots. And just for a clarification on the 2022, 23, why you see approximately, that is the year we did a software change in our. We moved from one software system to another software system and we can't access that old sauce to have the. We are pretty, we think we're pretty close on this number, but just know that we couldn't access, we can no longer access our old contracts. And then as you can see, I, as I said at the start, how many slots were licensed for? When you see high, where you don't always see a consistent enrollment. Is again, if we try to match up part-time schedules. So if a child is coming Tuesday, Thursday, if we can match a Monday, Wednesday, Friday child with that, then you're going to see. Essentially two children in one slot. And of course you can see our slightly dipped enrollment during COVID as well. So I've been here before and shared the outcomes of early child, or excuse me, early ventures children, but just wanted to highlight this again. And as you know, for the past two school years, 100% of children who attended early ventures were kindergarten ready as determined by the STAR early literacy test. So. Two years in a row, this is the data from the fall of 2022, but you saw early venture students that were ready for kindergarten. So I just wanted you to be able to see how those children are doing now. So those children are now. Very close to finishing their kindergarten and first grade years. And you can see for the cohort that was enrolled in kindergarten, they are continuing to see success on the STAR early literacy test. None of those students were in the urgent intervention or intervention level for winter or spring. And then in the cohort that's now wrapping up their first grade year, they are also on continuing to see success with 90%. Being at or above the 50th percentile with one child still to test this spring. So. We're excited to see ongoing success of those students who were ready when they entered kindergarten. So of course, part of what I am here for obviously is just to, as you have all seen, is just the dilemma that exists. It is a challenging decision for schools to spend general fund money on early learning. We also know there's a need for childcare in this community, in this county, throughout this state. The, the cost of childcare exceeds what most families can afford to pay and what is suggested. By the Minnesota Legislature and the Federal Department of Health, Health and Human Services. So when I was here doing the budget report, I also shared this with you, but. The Federal Department of Health and Human Services and the Minnesota State Legislature suggests that family pay, families pay no more than 7% of their household income on childcare. No matter how many children they have. In Rice County, I reflected that the medium income is just over $71,000 a year. And in Northfield, the medium income is just over $73,000 a year. For next year, an infant at early ventures will cost $16,500. And a preschooler will cost approximately $14,250. So this would be approximately 19 to 23% of household incomes per child in Northfield. And as you all know, and you can see in the chart above and then in the narrative, we are still, we are not covering our costs as a childcare provider. So we are over the threshold of what the, by significantly, but we're also as a state. So Minnesota. States that the average family spends 20% of their income, income on childcare. So we're looking at being almost three times over. What the, what is the federal suggestion for this? So. Obviously you all understand the challenge here that this poses too. And as I mentioned, we, early venture childcare has operated as a, at a deficit every year, except for when we were receiving. The largest amount of COVID-19 pandemic relief funds, which were, are in the table above in the narratives. So again, here is just a reflection of what it does cost to attend early ventures and it, we do have kind of a breakdown. And so that the more days you attend. It does reduce your cost per day. But just for the math for you, if you are attending full-time a year round, that being based on. 250 days of care. So you're taking out the holidays, you're taking out the fact that early ventures is closed during school workshop week because that is when we also train our staff. But that we, and that we also just close at. Coming up here to transition from school year to summer, and just so we can be prepared for the kids that we have too. So. Looking at being open for 250 days of care, it does cost for an infant $16,500 a year. For a toddler, $14,750 a year and for a preschool, $14,250 a year. All that said, we do accept all the scholarships that are available for, to families to attend early ventures. So we do accept pathway one scholarships. Those scholarships are awarded to the family for them to then go and select a high-quality childcare center or preschool. On an exciting note, those rates are going up pretty significantly come July 1. So the rates you're seeing on the screen. Are what will go into effect on July 1, which this will cover our costs for. Children in our center who are on pathway one where it has up until this year, it has not covered a whole year. The challenge is families are often placed on waitlists for pathway one. So we. Help a number of families both in early ventures and in hand-to-hand preschool at the start of the year, complete pathway one. Scholarships and we will hear throughout the year about people being accepted. But your funding starts on the day that you're accepted. So even if we filled out an application in August, if we hear about it in December, that will be when the funding starts. And then the childcare assistance program, CCAP, as you've probably heard about, is administered by the county. It does provide financial assistance to help families with low income. Pay for childcare so that parents can pursue employment or education leading to employment. This system is also hard to navigate. And as you can see in the narrative, the reimbursement rates for Rice County are significantly lower than Dakota County. So the Rice County rates do not, if you are living in Rice County and attending early ventures, receiving CCAP, they will not cover the cost of tuition you have. If you live in Dakota County, attend early ventures, they will cover the cost of tuition you have. This just is a little, it's an economic challenge, right? For the low-income families who are living in Rice County. I mean, the cost, the closer you get to Dakota County, the, the higher the costs are for childcare and a number of other things. And so. That does put an additional stress on families who are receiving CCAP because they are, the family then is responsible. For the difference between what CCAP is reimbursing and then what we, what we are charging as, as a childcare center or any other center that accepts CCAP. So what you may have heard is people talk about the childcare crisis or the child, the, where we're at with childcare in the state is just what is the cost of care? So most states use a market rate survey to understand the price of childcare services. And then studies have shown that for many childcare businesses, the price of tuition doesn't actually reflect the actual cost of care for providing that care. What you're seeing is that many providers set tuition rates based on what local families can afford. And then are working to balance their budgets by offering lower wages, potentially no benefits, not paying themselves. So the cost of care is really reflects an estimate of the true cost of what it takes to provide childcare, regardless of what the price is in the local market. So we were fortunate enough in April of 2023. As a county, we worked with the First Children's Finance to, to do a cost of care. Analysis for the county to under, have a better understanding of where our gaps are. We did this both with. In-home childcare providers, and then we did it with childcare centers. So I wanted to be able to reflect for you where we are seeing these, these gaps. And so you can see. Both with the CCAP rate, the median tuition and then the 17th, 75th percentile, sorry, of tuition. And you can see. Infants are obviously where we experience the largest gap. And that is really due, the ratio of infant care, as you know, is, is lower. Again, this doesn't take into account the needs you might be seeing of students in that classroom, but really this is, is more closely aligned to what those DHS. Ratios are looking at, but does give you a sense of where we're seeing the gaps in what is being. Charged for childcare, but what it's actually be, what is the actual cost of childcare in these settings? So with that, here is a picture of the class that is about to head into kindergarten out of early ventures. And so they were recently students of the week for Northfield Public Schools. And are excited to be incoming kindergarten students as well. And I will take any questions.
Thank you so much, Erin. Oh, did you want to add some comments?
So after Erin's presentation about the budget, several board members talked about. Childcare and wanting to learn more. And so that's why I asked Erin to provide this presentation to go a little bit more detailed than what we can do in a typical budget presentation. And then this is such an important issue that we felt it was worthy of a work session. So as you know, we're going to have a work session before the board meeting on June 10th from four to 5:30. And the intent of this particular presentation was really to give you that background knowledge. You can ask Erin questions tonight. You can ask us, you know, give us information or questions. Of what you'd like to see at that work session between now and June 10th. This way we are able to help ground you in the reality that we're facing. And then start to determine some big questions. We have had plans since we put the Greenville Park, the old Greenville Park School, the NCEC on the ballot in 2018. To be able to expand. That pathway was derailed by COVID for a certain amount of time. We are now seeing that opportunity to do so again. So. Where would the board like us to go? What are the things that you'd like us to explore? How can we make sure that we continue to do this important service for the community and to take a little bit of control of our own destiny? And that preparation for kindergarten by making sure that kids come to school with that kindergarten readiness. But there is an economic model that isn't just us, right? This is statewide. In fact, if you're fans like I am of TPT's Almanac Show, they have a whole series right now on childcare in outstate Minnesota. And it's really a fascinating series talking about the difficult nature, both for parents and for providers. So this is not just a Northfield issue, but we have an opportunity to discuss it in greater detail. So I just wanted to give you that background, what, you know, what was the purpose of the presentation tonight? How it's going to set up our discussion on June 10th? And then after that, the board can discuss further, what are the pathways that you'd like us to take next, if any of them at all? So I just, I thought it was important to provide a little bit of context there too.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board members? Ben and then Jenny.
Sure. Thanks, Erin. Informative as always. Could you put the cost of cares line back up? I'm wondering if Tim can do that?
I'll let Tim take, there we go. Then I can.
So when we look at those different colored lines on there, I think. Find it in my packet here, but I'll squint and do it this way. So the CCAP rates, those are specific, those are the rates specific to Rice County.
Correct. Yes.
And then the cost of care, that's on a monthly basis.
Correct. Yep. So that would be an average throughout the county. So this would be, we surveyed throughout the county and that. First Children's Finance surveyed throughout the county. So that, those are the rates that average throughout the county.
And the median and 75th percentile would also be kind of throughout the county. It's not what we're charging.
Correct. It's not just early ventures. That is correct. Sorry. Good clarification. Good clarification.
No, no, that's helpful. And then can you talk a little bit about how the landscape in childcare has changed since COVID and Rice County?
Yeah, that's a great question too. COVID was really hard on childcare centers. So for example, we, um, it, early venture, in most programs at the N C E C saw a thirty percent decline in who attended programs. That should be for hand-in-hand and early ventures. E C F E actually saw about a fifty percent decline in who was attending. That would be true for other childcare centers. Everybody saw a pretty significant dip where either families were choosing to keep children home, had gone, you know, to a smaller childcare model, you know, whether that would be someone coming into their house or smaller pods of, of people. The, the biggest impact we've probably seen coming out of COVID is a, is a closure of in-home childcare providers. So we saw a stretch last summer of about six weeks where six closed. And so I, I think, uh, in-home childcare providers, when you were an income provider in COVID, just in lost, uh, children that were in your care, it was a real struggle to keep your doors open. Um, I think when you also look at things like this, um, when you're an in-home childcare provider, it doesn't pay benefits. You're looking at taking on a lot of your own costs. And so it, um, as wages also started to go up out of the pandemic, we really started to see a lot of in-home childcare, providers close. It has been less, um, uh, impactful on the centers. We haven't seen centers close, um, but we have seen in-home childcare providers close, which then is a loss in care for a number of children.
And then another question, just how many would you have rough percentages of, you know, current children attending early ventures receive that pathway one and how many are receiving C cap?
Yep. I might have to do a look on that, um, for what percentage of it is of our total, because I'm trying, trying to remember which year. I can, can I email that to you so I give you an accurate number?
Yeah, that worked, and then just, yeah, what percentage are paying full tuition?
Absolutely. The majority are paying full tuition, but I will give you an exact number.
Thank you.
Okay, Jenny, you had a question?
Thanks, Claudia. Um, I have a few questions. You just mentioned the, the closures that our community experienced. Were those in Northfield, in the city of?
Not necessarily all in the city of Northfield. One was in Webster, Sarah Line is here tonight because she's often connected. Sarah Line is our early child coordinator, who's also working on her community ed director license. One's in the city of Webster, where the rest? Not all. They're definitely all in the county. They were not necessarily, we could look on the roster for who, who's still licensed. Lonsdale had one in Webb, and rural Webster had one as well.
Okay, so you're thinking there's probably a couple that closed in Northfield?
Yes, there are definitely.
Out of the six, it was probably about two.
Uh, probably four that were in the city of Northfield.
Okay.
Two, two being outside the city, being closer to Webster and in Lonsdale. Uh, well, would Lonsdale? Could be parts of it. I mean, I, whether they're, you know, in-home is a little more challenging to know whether they're serving kids in the district, whether they're driving in. I would say it all has an impact on where kids are being, you know, when they close in this region, it starts to funnel people to anything that's available.
Okay, I ask because I, I was just wondering too, then if you had the total, um, of, um, the child providers then to kind of measure it up to?
Yep, so we can pull, like, the number of childcare providers in, in the county or in Northfield?
Um, in Northfield.
And you're.
And in, in the county, if you're taking that six, if you have that six number.
And you're.
Countywide.
Yeah, Jenny, just so I'm clear, you want both in-home and licensed, correct?
Yes.
I can certainly bring that back for the work session.
And then so that, so that number would be from twenty twenty, that would be from last summer.
Yeah, when the closures happened was a stretch in last summer.
And then, um, do we have the numbers, uh, for this year? Any have closed or?
I've not heard, have you heard of any?
Continuing.
In-home.
Yeah, I just attended, yeah, but there's a United Providers Association where the zero.
There's a United Providers Association, so it's a meeting of the licensed in-home daycare providers that meet. Um, and there were additional, um, either, um, going to retire this summer or, or, um, closing. So, um, and we can, we can pull those, the, uh, the Rice County updates, the who's licensed. I mean, I think it's probably almost immediate on the website.
And we often hear about this too, because when they are closing, they contact Sarah, Sarah and Breezy Barrett have good contacts with people. They contact us often to one, say that they're closing, two, if they're wanting to get rid of any supplies that they have, they're looking for, um, centers, people that might want to purchase Cots toys. So this is also how we often are keeping track, because we are often hearing as there's point, when they potentially are looking at other jobs, when they're potentially going to retire, when they're gonna make a life change, they're often reaching out as a way to give heads up and to potentially reduce their supplies and their inventory of childcare things. Okay, so it would be a good idea to get both last year and this year?
We can do that.
If you can.
Yep.
Um, to compare to, um, and then I asked, had another question you have in the narrative, you have the budget, uh, for the last six years and that this budget is only for early ventures?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
That portion. And then, um, could you, could you have a breakdown too of per, you know, ages or per the program classrooms?
Yep, Val has been working on that heavily. Yes. Do you want to share anything about budget breakdown for classrooms?
Um, it's just, I have the expenditure breakdown, but the revenue is much more difficult in our system. And so that's taking me a lot longer than I anticipated, but I'll have that for the workshop, for the work session.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other questions or comments? Okay, Cory and then Jeff.
Two questions, kind of hypothetical, I'll save the more visionary questions for the work session. Uh, Jenny was just touching on the budget piece, and this year we're budgeted at about two hundred and sixty thousand dollar deficit. If all things are the same next year with the increase in the pathway scholarships, do you have any sense on how much that would cover to lower that deficit?
Uh, not a significant amount.
Okay.
We do, there's, we just don't, um, right now we have one, two children on pathways in early ventures. So it's not a signif, you know, while yes.
Impactful for those who use it.
It's impactful for those who use it. It's, you are right, it's not going to make a substantial difference in the program budget.
And then I think you've shared in past, you know, you can't just build one room, you have to build multiple rooms, they have somewhere to go. So hypothetically, if there was an expansion, let's say we had three rooms. Is staffing a concern or are enough people to find? You mentioned wages a little bit, but just, there'll be people to find, do the work.
Yeah, so in, in, in this hypothetical, um, I would recommend that we would start with kind of an, move up one at a time, because it would, I would significantly worry if we said we're going to open three, four, or five classrooms at one time, that would cause a little bit of panic in finding staffing. I think if, you know, you, if you incrementally start to, oh, you might have to open infant toddler at, at the same time in order to be able to move kids, um, correctly. You know, we, there is the, um, there are some opportunities out right, right now to build childcare workforces. It's been added to some of the workforce development grants. Um, we, we are intending to apply for these next year, um, to, and that would support people who want to go back and gain education or experience to be, um, working in the field of childcare. Uh, there's also for high school students who want to be explorer, potentially be working in the childcare field there. They can earn credit right now while being paid and working in the childcare field. So there, there are a number of efforts out there right now to, um, grow and expand the childcare workforce. Uh, but I, you know, if we had to hire twenty at one time, yes, that would cause me a panic. I think it would, if we had planned, um, growth, I think we have some people that reach out to us, you know, here and there that are interested in, in getting into the district or working in a childcare setting. But that would be wanting to be part of the planned expansion too and have some lead-up time for sure.
Hey, Jeff?
Yeah, thanks for your presentation. A couple of quick questions. The criteria for anyone that wants to be in the program, they have to have a physical address and be in the district or what other criteria is there?
They, they do not have to have a physical address in the district. They, um, you can register, so for example, we employ enough, uh, we care for a number of children of district staff who don't necessarily live in the district. We have some care for people who work in this community, but who are bringing their children with them, but they don't necessarily live in the school district. So we are serving people that are not necessarily district residents. Majority of these students do matriculate to our K twelve system, because their parents are either working here or have connections to Northfield. But you don't have to be a district resident to enroll.
And then as a follow-up a little bit to Ben's question, I mean, prior to COVID, you know, I mean, what, what really, it doesn't sound like there was a lot of private childcare people in our district out there. And I mean, to be, to me, it'd be, I mean, and I'd almost like to figure out who was in that business and who would still actually be in that business? And how can, you know, the public, private sector kind of work together to support that? So that would be one question.
Yep, we can, I'll bring that with the list of who are the childcare providers. We'll provide both, um, centers and in-home providers so that you can look at that list.
Then last question, um, kind of a hypothetical, how far will parents drive for childcare? I mean, do they, would they go to Fairbode, do they go to Farmington, would they go, I mean, what, what has been your experience?
Yep, they will drive to all the, yes, they will. I think parents at this point are looking, um, so things they're considering, if they don't live in the community they're working, they are looking, um, in the community they live, they're looking in the community they work, and they're looking anywhere in between that they might, um, drive along that way. I think, um, I've heard of one, um, family who's currently in Morristown, who has been checking and they work in Fairbode. They've been looking in Fairbode, Morristown doesn't have a childcare options for them. They've been looking in Fairbode in Northfield right now. They don't, they're not, they don't have any ties to Northfield right now. They're just looking for childcare.
Questions, okay, Ben?
Sorry, a couple more.
Yeah, it's.
And just reflecting on, my kids are a little past that age now, but you know, at the time I worked in St. Paul, my wife worked in Hastings and kids were in childcare in Northfield. So you had to leave at three thirty or you weren't going to get there. Close sometimes. You know, it is a challenge, I think, just, I mean, it was a challenge fifteen, sixteen years ago. And it seems like it's only gotten worse in terms of availability. I mean, I think that cost of care is interesting because you look at really what it costs to provide that service. Like you were saying, you know, some people basically, you know, the private marketplace isn't necessarily functioning correctly because that cost of care is so high and people can't afford it really. And that, that's the challenge we're faced with, I think, from the district standpoint. I guess that was, you know, where, do we know where families who are on the waitlist? What are they currently, how are they sort of meeting their care needs?
Sure, um, I could ask if Breezy has some more details about that. So by the time they're, like, if they're preschool age, they're likely finding that. But I can find out if we have more details about what they're doing for care if they're in the younger.
And it, one other question that sort of moves into that one, and you know, when you show the different costs per day, depending on how many days per week you are accessing that, obviously that also has an impact on the care ratio. So you know, if you've got infants, you have to one to four. Are there challenges sometimes if people only need two days? Or are those rooms typically full because somebody that's using two days, there's another, somebody that wants those other two or three days?
Yep, typ- typically full and partly bend, because some people will take three days if that's all they can get. So typically they're full because people, if the goal is to get in for most families, right? The goal is just to get in because then you get first in, in re-registering with. So when we open registration for next year, we open it for current families first, and then we open it for new families two weeks later. So most, um, they might want more, they might be under cared for if that, if, if there's such a thing. And as far as what the parent really would like for care, but, um, there is a number that are going to take what we have available. Uh, last summer, we had a couple of infants that were only with us, we could only care for them in the summer, but they took that um, in the hopes that either we'd have people drop their slots, move out. And unfortunately, we, we didn't, so we only cared for these children in the summer. But, um, we see more often that people will take whatever it is in an effort to either, you know, have some childcare for a while and then piece together if they're on like a three-day-a-week schedule to try to piece it together.
And for us, there's not really an economy of scale, you know, by adding a classroom, because you still have to maintain those ratios.
Correct.
That's kind of a good way to think about it.
Great questions, anyone else? Do you have another question, Jeff?
One more. Um, I just can't look away from the, the big difference in the Dakota County and the Rice County that you mentioned. Um, just looking at it on the, the narrative here, it's, it's huge. And I was curious to know if the county has kind of a review cycle that they use? So they can go, I mean, it would be nice to do it every year.
Are you wondering how these rates are set? Is that, so the, that is a great question too. So these rates are, um, set by the, um, survey. Every, they put out a survey, I, um, in my own opinion, not very widely or probably enough, um, kno- knowledge to everyone. But the goal is to have childcare providers complete the survey. And then they're going to set, um, the, 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 those that administer the C cap will set those rates based on what is filled out by, in that survey. Does that make sense? So they're trying to say, we're going to take, um, the, the average of what the Rice County is charging for care in these settings. And then that's what we're going to do, the reimbursement rate, and the same for Dakota County. So whether we have a poor return rate, I have worked hard to have everybody that I know of complete that survey, because that is what is driving these rates. But it is, the ownership is on the survey coming out, the providers completing the survey, and then that's what's driving, um, these rates. I will also say, um, the state of Minnesota was, um, almost non-compliant in their C cap reimbursements rates for a period of time because they were so low. And so they have kind of, in the last legislative session, they did make an, an increase to that. But it's still a challenge, as you can see, especially when you're, when you are on a border of what would be a metro, um, county and a county that is a very close, you know, not, not quite metro, but is, has some similar expenses to when you are close to metro, um, communities.
And so they, they take the average of the childcare providers and the licensed centers?
Yep, and what the, so there's, um, there's rates, there's different rates for which you are. This is, would be for the centers. Does that make sense?
Oh, so, so you're, so you said providers, but it's not, the survey is not taking providers, it's only taking the centers?
It takes both, but they're different rates, whether you're an in-home. So most things reimburse on a different rate, whether you're an in-home provider or a center. Acknowledging that centers tend to cost more than in-home providers.
That's what I was kind of leading to, is I was wondering if they're only taking, um, providers.
Nope, anyone can fill out the survey. It's just the reimbursement rates are on two different. There's a reimbursement rate for in-home providers and a reimbursement rate for childcare centers.
That explains it, thank you.
Great questions, great discussion, anyone else? Another question? Okay, thank you Erin for your information and we'll see you at the work session.
Thank you.
Okay, item six is committee reports. Do we have any committee reports submitted, Anita? Okay. Okay. Uh, yes, from Ben, yes. Did you want to comment on that or let it stand on its own?
I would just, I mean, we obviously, uh, recognize the seniors here during the last session, I don't think that maybe made an intimate report, so I will just add that as an additional comment, but otherwise the report stands. Thanks.
Thank you. Right, item seven is our consent agenda. As a reminder, there was some personnel items in the table file added to that consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the grouping for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Jenny and second by Ben. Okay, um, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Our next item is items for individual action. We have, um, letter A, policy committee recommendations. The board has requested to approve the policy committee's recommended updates to policies five, three, three, and eight, oh, nine, point one, as presented at the May thirteenth board meeting. I'll take a motion first and then we can have discussion. Is there a motion to approve the updates to these policies? Okay, moved by Cory, second. By Ben, thank you. Is there any discussion, questions or comments? Not at this time. Um, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And next is the proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budgets. All funds in the packet is the annual proposed budget book for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. The individual funds have been presented and reviewed in detailed at this, in detail at school board meetings over the past few months. A summary of revenue and expenditure amounts are presented in this memorandum. A summary of revenue and expenditure amounts are presented in this memorandum uploaded to the public, uploaded for the public on our district website. Is there a motion to approve the proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budgets as presented for all funds? By Ben, second. All right. Is there any discussion, comments, questions on this item? All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number nine is items for information. We have graduation. ALC graduation is scheduled for six on Friday, the thirty-first, six P M at the middle school auditorium. Northfield High School graduation is scheduled for two P M on Sunday, June ninth at Memorial Field. Board members should meet at the high school office at one thirty on June ninth. Item ten is our future meetings. We have on June tenth, a work session in this boardroom at four P M. June tenth, following the work session is our regular board meeting. July eighth, a regular board meeting here in this boardroom, six P M. And July twenty-second, five P M, a workshop in this boardroom. Also have Monday, August twelfth, regular meeting in this boardroom. That's all the business that we have tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Jeff, second. Second by Cory. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.